I think we can get started.
Wait, wait, can you give me a sec? One sec. Okay. All right, we're good.
All right. Will you want to call the roll?
Sure. Alderman Ludigson?
Here.
Alderman Doak?
Here.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Here.
Alderman Williamson is not here.
Yeah, he said he'll be here in about fifteen minutes.
And Alderman Muster, is anybody heard from her?
She said she wouldn't.
She gave notice that she would not.
Oh, she, I didn't see it, okay, thank you so much, okay, so she, well, so before.
Very good. Tonight's the budget presentation, but in the absence of the mayor, would you like to select a chairman among you?
Why don't you do it, Joe?
Okay, all right. Well, we're, okay, well, we'll get started.
Wait, 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 okay.
Really, really.
Hold on, we gotta.
Mark can do it, it'd be good for him.
Getting started, real pause and take.
No, I'm on.
Mark's a quick learner.
It's six thirty-three PM.
All right, well, to start off, this budget follows considerable review and discussion this summer at the Strategic Directions Committee meeting, which then presented a report recommendation to the larger council, which was approved. And from that, there were three things of direction for changes to this year's budget process. One was shorter and more digestible parts of the budget presentation rather than the marathon session that we traditionally had on Saturday, which were pretty difficult after about two or three in the afternoon when the tension was waning. Second item was the recommendation for direct communication with department directors, and they will be presenting their budgets tonight as well as our next scheduled budget meeting. And then the third item is to address the service charge issues. Just to get started, the budget as presented, what we'll be discussing tonight, is balanced, and there's a small surplus. There are two critical areas that we've discussed in previous council meetings, but this budget as presented reflects the loss of one hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the state's reduction in local government distributed funds, and also one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in airport sales tax from the Federal Aviation Administration ruling regarding money collected at airports must be returned to airports.
What was that last time out, was that also one hundred and sixty thousand?
That was one hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred and fifty thousand.
So, we're, we're starting off this year, three hundred and ten thousand dollars in, to the rent, and that's certainly in a small city, that's, that's a sizable hit. The budget, proposed budget, also represents a major structural change with the elimination of roughly ninety, ninety-five percent of the service charges that we've had in previous budgets. And that also follows considerable discussion at the Strategic Directions meeting. Mike Ducharme will discuss how this was accomplished, and also what the impact of this change is on the budget. And finally, importantly, you all have the memo of really strategic, strategic financial management or budgetary issues. We'd like to spend some time, starting with that after Mike gives us an overview, because much of the budget in terms of issues of such pension contributions, capital, financing capital projects are related to how we address these strategic issues. But I'll turn it over to Mike, who I, I wanted to thank him, and also Sherry, Sherry's not here tonight, but in the last several weeks, they have pored over this, and particularly the issue of the service charges, that, that took quite a bit of reconstructive work. So, I want to thank both of them for getting us to the position where we're at tonight. And what better way to start than basically the ten thousand foot overview, and also where we're at with individual funds and fund balances.
Okay. First thing before I start. When I first came here, when I first started here, I believe the first thing every single department had told me, when I met them, was that they wanted more input into producing their budget, because in the past, I believe, the majority of it was produced for them. They may have added things, but I don't think there was ever a feeling that the budget was.
Theirs.
Theirs.
Yeah.
I can tell you firsthand, they could tell you firsthand, that everything related to their budgets came from them. We took the information, put it into the format, we may have run the wages and benefit schedules, but everything else that you're seeing is coming directly from them, and they'll be talking to you about it tonight. Also, I would be remiss if I did not say that the bulk of this material that you have in front of you was produced by Sherry Graefen, and I'd be in a terrible orbit of that tonight. So, just so that you're aware, aware of that. The first place that I want to start this evening is the page in the PowerPoint called Fund Balance Projections. And please, I'll spend as much time or as little time as you want to spend on it, but the reason this slide is important is it addresses every single fund that's in the city. It shows you an idea of what I'm projecting in revenue for each of those funds, what I'm projecting in expenditures for each of those funds through the end of this fiscal year, and a projected fund balance at the end of this year.
Which slide are you looking at now?
I'm looking at the one here entitled Fund Balance Projections, the one that's up on the screen right now. Again, the pages should be numbered. The reason that's important is this shows you the fund balance before we started the year, it shows you then everything that's flowing in revenue and expense-wise, and what we expect that fund balance to be at the end of the year. And for council members, one of the things that's important is to get to the end of the year, you would like to look at those fund balances and know that you have a positive balance in those funds, or in the bulk of those funds that are out there. In the case of the slide that I have, Fund Balance Projections, the only fund that has a negative fund balance currently is SSA number one. It's showing a negative fund balance of one hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. That has been a negative fund balance for some time, and I don't believe there's anything that's going to happen to make that positive going forward.
Is there a debt owed against it?
Pardon?
Is there a debt owed against it?
No, I have a feeling that there was more money pulled out of there than was flowing into it from the property taxes when it was created.
The parking fund too, that's always been said to have a huge, the debts is.
The reason that, parking fund's a perfect example, it's showing a positive fund balance of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, but there is a loan out there from the general fund to the parking fund of in excess of five hundred thousand dollars. So, in essence, what's happening is you're running up more expenses than revenue in the parking fund. When you've used up all the reserves that you have in the parking fund, you go back to the general fund and you say, can you lend me some more money so that I can continue to pay service charges that I can't afford? And the reason you do that is, I, it may seem futile, but I guess to some extent, you do have to track those, what those expenses are, but I don't know that there are a tremendous amount, amount of options out there available to you to, in order to recover them.
I just mean to take you off, off the track on that, I, well, we can go over that later, but I was just curious, because I always heard that had a negative balance.
Yes.
Mike, so, you said, maybe I misunderstood, the budget as you're presenting it reflects, I think you said first, a positive number overall, the proposed budget, and does it take into account the elimination of the service charges, or is this, we have to do this, and then you change, it'll change as a result?
No, I have taken into account eliminating the service charges. And if you were to look at the general fund right now, the very top line of this, based on what we have, we expect to end this year, three hundred thousand dollars to the good, and basically, we are proposing next year that we would, eliminating the bulk of those service charges, that we will have one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars more revenue than we're showing as expenses for the proposed budget next year.
What is SSA one?
I don't know.
So, it's one of the sanitary sewer, special service area distribution. So, aren't we going to be zeroing that out anyway?
Well, in essence, at some point in time, we will have to basically close that fund out, which will draw down general fund balance by one hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars.
Okay, I mean, there's no more money being drawn into it.
That is correct, right.
So, it's just a permanently negative balance?
That is correct.
Ultimately, need to zero that out anyway?
Yes, sir, that's what I'm telling you. There is no longer a tax levy. SSA's one through four, the tax levies were replaced with the current new sewer fee that was created.
Now, to Pat's, forgive me if I'm getting off track, but to Pat's point about the parking fund, we kind of have to do the same thing with the parking fund, because we're no longer surcharging against the parking fund.
Our, our intent, or I, I believe the city's intent would be to minimize the damage going forward related to the parking fund in terms of trying to maximize our revenues, minimize our expenses, yet still cover the things that need to be done within the parking fund.
But what good does it do us to have one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar to the good balance, if right behind it, there's a negative half a million dollar?
That is, but.
Due to?
Number one, it is important, number one, that I tell you that.
Right.
Because I don't know that you necessarily knew there was five hundred thousand dollars out there, and those are the kinds of things that we just want to talk about occasionally, so that you don't look at me like with three heads and say, why is it we did not know this?
So, where, I mean, not to put you on the spot, this is a question we're planning to hear, but where is that differential then, between what we're showing as a balancing parking fund to what actually is, in this reconciliation of these fund balances?
Well, what it is, Pat, is you would not see that five hundred thousand dollars that I'm talking about, we would have to go to the financial report, and I could show you in there, there's an advance from the general fund to the parking fund that is recorded within the audit, that shows that there is that debt owing between those funds. Other than that, you would not see it on any of these reports.
Do you, do you know, is that a carryover that keeps being added to?
Oh, yes.
Or was that a one-time?
Oh, no, this, it continue, it happens because you continue to run expenses greater than revenues, and it finally gets to a point that somebody says, wow, I better cover this, so we transfer some money over, and then we start the whole process again.
So, that continues to grow then?
Yes, sir, it does continue to grow.
Yeah, I don't want.
Well, it's a, why, why isn't the fund balance zero then?
Why isn't the fund balance zero?
Yeah, for the parking fund.
Because we keep transferring money in there to allow them to operate.
This, this is operating money on an annual basis, or what is, what does that represent?
No, that, that hundred and eighty-eight thousand represents currently, if you were to look at the parking fund, what their current fund balance is, but only because we've funneled five hundred thousand in there from the general fund to create them.
No, I understand that, but the net is, of course, to the general fund, three hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Of which.
Underlying, you know why we carry one hundred and eighty-eight thousand as a fund balance at all for the parking fund?
Well, accounting-wise, that's how I need to show it, because that is proper, based on what has been done.
In other words, that's just a snapshot picture of where we're at today, and it can change in a, in six months or so.
If you went back and you looked at the CAFR, you'd see the other pieces, and somebody would realize, oh, this is not a good story.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Because to look at that and say, hey, you know, we have half of what we need to do to redo the parking lot, is a falsehood altogether.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, oh, without a doubt.
Is it something that we should forgive?
Well, but you'll continue to run expenses as long as you have it.
Yeah, but knowing that we're going to have these expenses, and we can pretty much ballpark the expenses we're going to have, short of redoing the parking lot, shouldn't we budget it in such a manner that it zeroes out at the end of the year? And we're not incurring additional debt? We're never going to get any more revenue off of it, because the revenue is two dollars a car per day.
Hey, Scott, I took them down into this wormhole here, with a question I shouldn't have asked, and I know they want to get through a certain.
All right, I'm sorry.
We'll get through it eventually, that fund will be something we talk about.
Oh, definitely. The next, the next place I wanted to go is this piece of paper that's right here, and I don't have a slide for it, but what this piece of paper right here, is, everybody have it? The column I'd like you to focus on is the one that is Proposed Fiscal Year 2018-2019 Budget. And the reason I'm focused on that is, before we start our discussion, I just want you to be able to see for every fund that is currently in the city of Prospect Heights, what we're proposing in terms of revenues and expenditures for next fiscal year. In some cases, if you scan that column, you'd see that there are some numbers that are highlighted in yellow. Perfect example is, the first one you've come to is the DEA fund. Please, the only reason that fund is showing negative is we would budget for expenses, but we are not able to budget for an estimated revenue that he may bring in in the course of the year. But what I'm trying to tell you is, the hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred that is shown as an expense here, that we do have funds on hand to cover it. So, I'm just giving you that reassurance, that I'm not showing an expense that I don't have fundee for.
And as I looked at it with your other sheets, I had questions about this. Is this because we don't have a number in yet, or are we waiting for a number?
No.
Or, or, you know, do we have trend data that, I'm not sure what I'm trying to show.
Sure, please.
Larry, when it comes to DEA fund, we are mandated by the government not to forecast.
Maybe explain what the DEA fund is.
I know what it is, I know what it is, but I, okay, that answered the question then.
Yeah.
You cannot forecast funds.
No, there's money in the pipeline that's there, but they tell us that we cannot use that as far as building our budgets.
So, is, is the hundred and thirty-seven, five that's there, you're saying we've got money to cover that?
We already have the money in the bank, in the DEA.
You're not seeing the balance in the bank?
Okay, all right, all right.
It's typically proposed as zero.
No, I, you, you answered the question, thank you.
And that's, we're going through this exercise, please ask whatever you want, because.
Let me ask another thing, sort of a general thing, and maybe this is, these are owing fund balances, I don't know. I look at revenues with parentheses in them, that, to me, that seems, that, what is that, what are you indicating there?
Revenues are just shown as credits, expenses are shown as debits, that's all.
Negative expenses are revenues.
Yeah. Yeah. Bottom line, the numbers that are.
But you budget them as revenues?
I budget them as revenues.
Okay, I'm, I'm, all right.
I, I'm with you, Larry.
I, I.
But it's, it is what it is.
I, I could eliminate them, and just as easily, you'd be less confused, but that's out there.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's a.
Yes.
But then, would you want them to show the expenses as credits? It's like, you're showing it the right way accounting-wise.
Yes, accounting-wise, I'm showing it the correct way. I'd have to show one of them in order to give you an idea of what.
Let's take the MFT fund, just, it's for the numbers.
MFT fund?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
You're, you're showing under the column of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, whatever you're calling these, credits of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and expenses of fifty thousand dollars. Are you actually expecting revenues in at four hundred and twenty thousand?
Yes, sir, I am.
And I don't know why it's in percentages, I don't, I've never, you know, I'm not, it doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, I could just as easy eliminate them, but in most cases, people would look at it, it's one number over the other. So, there's, there's a positive number and a negative number, I'm just showing you the revenues.
But typically, I'm used to seeing numbers that are with parentheses around them are negatives or reductions, I don't, you know, maybe that's what I'm used to, I don't know.
Yeah, it, it's totally what you're used to.
Okay. So, I, I just, I pretend, I'm supposed to pretend I don't see the parentheses?
Yes, yes, exactly. Just look at which number is bigger, and hopefully, it's a revenue.
It's about as easy as I can put it.
Just a couple other things that I'd like to make points of, so you don't think I'm crazy. In SSA's two, three, four, in some cases, five, it is showing more expenses than there are revenues. The expenses that I'm showing in SSA two, three, and four is the fund balance that is available, so in the event there are sewer expenses that are going to come up in the future, this money would be available within those special service areas to pay for improvements in those areas. I'm budgeting it because it would allow us to spend it if the opportunity came up. If I didn't budget for it going forward, I would always have to amend the budget to allow us to spend it, and I don't want to do that. Capital Projects Fund is showing a negative one million, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand on this report. If you'll all remember, we transferred five point nine million dollars from the general fund to the Capital Projects Fund, which will offset that negative that's sitting there. Unless you have some more questions, we'll continue to move through.
Are we getting to this one now?
Yes, we are, next page.
Just, just a quick, well, we're gonna go over capital later, that's all.
We will go over capital later.
Are we gonna go over all these ones into the meeting at some point?
Sure are.
Okay.
All the funds, the remaining funds will come up in the last night, which would be, I think, March twenty-six, as current's coming up. And in the presentation, there was a schedule that was laid out for each of those nights, and we'll continue to give you PowerPoint pages to have.
And also too, if you have questions, this is basically a month-long process. Please feel free to call, shoot an email. I know Mike does a great job fielding questions from the professors, but sometimes it's worthwhile to get a phone call or an email too.
Can I just ask, so we have a meeting on the twelfth, and we have a meeting on the twenty-sixth, correct?
Yes, we do. A portion of both of those council meetings will be devoted to the budget, or will be covered. The next slide that I have in here is just a little recap, showing that we're projecting that we're going to have actual revenues of eight point six million, and actual expenses of eight point three million when we get to April thirtieth of twenty eighteen. At April thirtieth, twenty eighteen, we're expecting to have unassigned fund balance of two million, four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars.
Is this because you, this is because you've undone the budget and redid it in your format for the current year, correct? I mean, you don't, if you follow our budget from last year, the capital comes out in the general, you know, there is no separation.
I have created a new format, so then.
So, this is not, when people look at this and say, this is in excess of, it's only because of the way the budget's being presented, not because of the change of an unexpected revenue or an unexpected expense.
Well.
Or probably, it's a portion of it is, but majority is how you're classifying things right now.
Let's talk about this for a minute, okay? In the general fund, at the end of last year, there was fifteen million dollars that we would have all considered to be reserves of the city of Prospect Heights. Of that total, hmm, how's easiest way I can do this? Of that fifteen million dollars off the top, five point nine million of that fifteen million was set aside for capital. As a matter of fact, why don't you pull this sheet here that I gave you?
It's all right there.
There is, in that sheet, it shows you, per the CAFR, that there was fifteen million, two ninety-five, eight forty-eight at the end of four thirty seventeen. And of that total, according to this, five point eight million in there was set aside for your capital projects. And that is the same capital projects that I asked you to move from the general fund into the Capital Projects Fund. So, that fifteen million less five point eight will now give us a new reserve total for the general fund. Of that total, of the remaining nine point whatever million dollars, there are a couple of interesting parts to that that you should be aware of. Of that reserve amount, there is one million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, zero ninety-five, that's already been designated as an emergency reserve. There is also a capital reserve of, or an emergency reserve of nine hundred and seventy-five thousand that's sitting out there. And if I added the one point three and the nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, I'd have basically two point four million that has been set aside to cover you in the event of an emergency or a disaster. That amount represents twenty-seven percent of your operating expenses, okay? Now, the reason I'm bringing this up is, in addition to that two point four million, there is another one point eight or one point nine it says here, and I'm saying at the end of eighteen, I expect that unassigned fund balance to be two point four million dollars, which that money being unassigned could be used to increase this emergency reserve if you wanted to, or the operating reserve, or if you decided to, and what Joe has recommended in his memo, is he'd like to see one point two million of that moved over to the capital to allow us to cover more capital expenditures going forward. The point is though, that money being unassigned has not been designated for any purpose. The rest of the money that would be left in that capital is really, is set up as a reserve, but I tell, I caution you, or I'd say, it's kind of a light reserve. And I say a light reserve because you borrowed four point four million dollars from the general fund to cover the debt for the land purchase over in the arena. That is on the books for four point four million, depending on what we sell the land If we receive four point four million for it, we could wipe that off the books. If we receive less than the four point four, we're gonna have to wipe off whatever remainder is there, and I'm hopeful that a portion of that can be offset with the remaining increment that's due to come in, in the Palatine TIF in the remaining years that it's there.
Have we written down any of that loan?
None that, that I'm aware of.
Because there was one point, what would we sell the?
That's where you come out, I think.
No, it's the same as it is now.
No, it was, it was five point something before.
Oh, okay, so it was written down to four point four.
Yes, it was written down.
Okay, I, I apologize, I misspoke.
Okay, so just two points, I promise to try and keep them short so you guys can get to everything. When you, you, you've done a good job explaining this, this was the thing that we got, we asked for right at the end of the last budget, the old way, and I'm, I like it because now you actually, you, you have every item broken.
I, I showed you all the pieces.
This is the most important, this is like the dashboard, the watch, where the credit cash is.
There is no secret.
Most important thing, but there's two things you said, at the end of this budget year, we're gonna have a surplus.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna have about three hundred and some thousand dollars. What's different this year from last year though is that there is no funding mechanism for the capital improvement program per se. Capital improvement program is only funded by general revenue accesses or designations to it. This year, you wanna move one point two million from this unassigned reserve to it because we had money left over after our audit, after everything was done for seventeen. Again, it's a one-time funding, we have a lot of one-time funding things in Prospect Heights where this year this goes up because of a one-time thing or a one-time thing there. So this will really be it, once you do that, of the one-time funding items, there's nothing else. There's no more rabbits to pull out of the hat to stick into the capital program because the only money going forward that, after this fiscal year, will be whatever we assign from it from the General Fund. So I mean, it's important, I just, we have three hundred thousand left over this year. We show one point seven being used out of about six, that's in there now, will be seven, once you put this other money in. So that reserve is, is hugely going, quickly going down, and there's no real source to backfill what's coming up.
Correct. I think in the past, you were always working under the assumption that somehow come the end of the year, there was going to be eight or nine hundred thousand dollars that was left over, that you could somehow dump into that capital pot that would somehow continue that funding going forward. And I'm saying based on the methodology that I was seeing, that methodology was created to give you that eight or nine hundred thousand.
Kind of like a tax return.
Yeah.
You're gonna get all this money.
I gotta refund, I gotta refund. And in essence, it's kinda like short-lived. So the next step in our process would be, going forward, if everybody agreed to this, is we would amend the fund balance policy. And we'd amend the fund balance policy after some discussion to say, if the operating, if the operating reserve is funded to this level, and the emergency reserve is funded to this level, anything above and beyond that, that is designated unassigned, we may make the policy statement that fifty percent of that would go directly to the capital fund to allow you to continue having some funding, but it wouldn't require you to make that decision each and every year unless you chose to. And we could do that just by creating the policy that would allow us to move it, assuming that's what you wanted us to do with it.
Mike, another question, and this, um, we have a certain amount of funds, whatever that dollar num, amount is, that's invested. How it's invested, I don't wanna get into that discussion now, because it's, it's very disappointing in the way it's set up. But I wanna know, the monies that are earned from those investments, where are those credited?
They go to the fund that they're attributed to. Let's talk about this for a minute though, just so we, everybody's on the same page here. Currently, most of our investments are done short-term, interest rates aren't necessarily high. But please understand, I've had people look at me and say, I don't understand why you're investing this money at one percent when I have my local CD at the bank and I can get two percent on my money. Well, you need to understand the reason I can only get one percent is because I'm asking those banks to pledge me collateral, to cover me that in the event something happens, I have investments that have been pledged to me from those institutions that were, basically provide me with a hundred and ten percent of the value of the money I've got invested. So those banks only pay me a limited rate of return based on the fact of they're having to provide me collateral to guarantee my investments that are sitting in those banks. The only thing that does not apply to would be the Illinois Funds, which are a triple A rated short-term fund, that they do not require collateral to be pledged because the whole thing is based on government securities that they're holding. But I just want you to know that so that if you ever look at it in terms of why are rates of return lower than what I see in the market, that's why.
Just like the pension fund.
Just like the.
They, they were limited to only, they were.
X amount of equity, X amount of fixed income.
Fixed income until they got to a certain dollar threshold.
I, I understand that, uh, but my, the thrust of my question is, let me use some examples then, okay? You said the, um, the interest is returned, or the earnings on the investments, let me put it that way. The earnings on the investments are returned to the funds from which they came. Is that a policy of ours, or is that statutory law? Or is that something that we could use strategically to take those returns and use them as a partial, as a funding for the capital fund?
No, most of those funds are designated that the interest rate, if it is being earned on that balance, will flow back into those funds. That doesn't preclude you from ever, not that I would move the interest directly, but in some of those funds, not all of them, you might have the luxury that if you chose to, you could move part of the balance from that fund to the General Fund. In water, sewer, parking, police pension, DEA, that would not be allowed. Capital projects though, if you wanted to, if I moved, just as I told you, I'd like you to move five point eight million dollars. If there was an earthquake in Prospect Heights and all of a sudden we had to cover a bunch of emergency repairs, you could just as easily say, Mike, transfer a portion of that back.
What about the General Fund?
The General Fund, I can move anywhere you designate, as long as it's not restricted. There are pieces that are restricted.
It would seem to me, and you know, you'd have to mash the numbers, I recognize that, it would seem to me there would be a potential source of funding for the capital fund. We say, okay, we, we don't want those committed to the General Fund because to me, in my mind, that's operations in a sense, okay? And then if, if that's the case, that's a way you could build the capital fund if you had to.
The only thing I would caution you to, I could do that.
Okay.
My, always, always my fear when it comes to the General Fund, especially in Prospect Heights, non-home rule communities, is it's very easy for the level of expenditures to exceed how fast your revenues are growing. The reason that comes about is, we have labor contracts, we have benefit increases. If I'm looking at salary increases and benefit increases of three to four percent, there's no way I can guarantee you that our revenues are gonna go up by three or four percent.
Right.
So the amount of money that's available to be moved out of that fund is not necessarily given.
Well, whatever it is, it could be a strategy, or, or one of the tactics by which the capital fund is ma, is, is made more viable.
That, that already happens because when there's a balance left in the General Fund of three hundred thousand, we sweep it to capital, part of that three hundred thousand is forty thousand that we collected in the interest that comes.
Yeah, but I, okay.
You wanna pigeonhole it, is what you're saying.
What I, yeah, what I'm saying is that we should have, if, if that's a policy we're doing, we're changing this fundamentally, and we're changing it the way I wanna see it because quite frankly, what we had before, in my opinion, it's my opinion only, we didn't know what the hell we had, because we were always shooting at some kind of a missing target. When I would say to, uh, well, how are we in relation to what we started off with in terms of a budget for a given project or a fund or whatever? I could never be given the answer because that was a moving bullet that changed with transfers.
True.
I mean, I've used transfers in my career as well in terms of financial management, but at least you keep the base point of where you started, to look at what your variances are, and if you make your budget adjustments in, in following years to make that happen. We never knew where we were, and that's why it was quote, so complex. It was really a series of mirrors.
Well, hopefully we have eliminated that. A couple of comments to what your, your point was about the interest. We don't get FDIC insurance, that's the reason we need the ten percent, uh, cap, capital.
We were putting multiple millions of dollars into some kind of investment, whatever that number is. We're supposedly earning something, whatever those, those things are. Rather than pouring them back into operations, I would like to see us go to the capital, whatever we can, go to the capital fund, build it that way. Because we are non-home rule, we gotta find other ways in which to keep that capital fund growing.
Rich, just to go back to you, the state, the statement you just made is not entirely correct. Because under the MACSA program, it's called, that's offered by Wintrust, where they have a whole branch of banks, they split their deposits amongst all their branches to take advantage of all the FDIC that is available, which provides us, or should provide us, a higher rate of return. Wintrust is just cheap. They just, they're not willing to pay the rate they should be, which is why they don't hold much of our money.
Okay, well, and, so I'll stand corrected on that to a certain extent. I, I mean, I, historically, they have not kept up with the same rate of returns as, you know, standard savings or online savings account or things like that. But the other point, Larry, is that historically, we've had several accounts, you know, many, well, many accounts. I don't know how many individual accounts we have now, but I, I know I've signed many cards, you know, signature cards. When we have to do that, it's, it's a nightmare of signing your name, and there's probably, what, thirty, forty accounts?
Probably, probably not that many.
Something like that, twenty-five maybe. But in that case, I mean, it's, the history has been that the city simply let, whatever institution was holding that, those funds, just pay the interest back into the fund, and then we use it as we need it to, as time allows. That was just the history of.
That's just, as long as their interest rates are competitive, that's what happens.
History is history, but we could make changes going forward.
History does not make it immutable for the future.
Next slide.
Itself is immutable, but the future is not.
General, General Fund revenues, just a snapshot to show you, going from fifteen, sixteen to our most current year, we're, we're estimating or proposing revenues next year of eight point five million. This compares, is slightly down from the eight point six two five percent, or the eight point six million last year due to the reduction in the local income tax and the loss of the airport revenue for the most part.
Mike, I, one other point, when Pat was speaking along, uh, fifteen minutes ago, he was talking about the unassigned fund balance of one point eight million dollars, and you said that Mayor Vina suggested to transfer one point two into the capital fund, and, but didn't you make the statement that you, we were going to appreciate significant money into that fund balance over the next year of two point, was it gonna go from one point eight to two point four, something like that?
Well, just from, just from, based on the fact of what we're expecting fund balance to be at the end of eighteen, our April thirtieth eighteen, we expect that, that unassigned fund balance will jump from what it was currently to two point four million. Of that two point four million, Joe is recommending that one point two million of that, when, when we get the final number, would get moved to the Capital Projects Fund and be added to the five point eight million that we just asked you to move.
Where would that six hundred thousand come from? That's really what my question is.
Revenue is over expenses, that's what fund balances.
It's, it's the, oh, we're gonna estimate this low and this high, and, and then we'll have a balance, and then we can cite it at the year-end that we have a balance, and that's what that is. This is the last year of that, he's, he's, he's getting us down to the nitty-gritty with revenue and expenses so that when we get to the year-end, we shouldn't expect anything different than what we budgeted.
Hopefully, we will get to the point where what you get is close to what we told you you were going to get. And the only reason that's important to you is, it allows you to maximize the use of the dollars you have available to you if you choose to.
I, I think the most important thing, I disagree with what makes it the most important. I think it's that it really illustrates that capital improvement program is a, right now, really a short-lived program. If we're, three, four years from now, we're not, we're not gonna be spending one point seven million regardless of what it says we need to. And, uh, that's, that's the biggest siren that should be going off right now.
Well, we, we, one of the things we, we tried to do with this budget, and we'll spend more time with it the last, uh, budget, I mean, I think it's the twenty, twenty-six or so, but, um, to try to look at capital improvements, not just as a snap, year-to-year snapshot of one year, oh, we feel pretty good, we've got some extra money, we'll do some additional drainage improvements or so forth, but to take a look at what are the identified needs of the next five years, and, and where they might fall. And also too, within those, not just streets, but also, uh, uh, information technology, equipment, vehicles, because that's part of, part of budgeting, the planning, decision-making too. Do we invest in, in streets, or drainage, or information technology, or all decision points, oh.
This, this tonight kinda sets that up for the, the coming meeting today.
The issue that we have is, you as aldermen, or as elected officials, have no idea currently what your capital improvements even total. Because you only talk about the ones that you see or the ones that may be most important at this point in time. I mean, aside from roads, aside from storm sewers, aside from fleet stop. I mean, we would like to get to the point of showing you a schedule that shows you every single piece of fleet equipment that you own, when we expect to have to replace it, and what the expected cost is, or we believe it will be to replace it. So we could add all of that information to the capital improvement program as well.
I, I appreciate that, I mean, that was something that we talked about six years ago when we first went to this, you know, began the capital improvement project, and it never developed. So, I mean, if you're saying it's gonna happen, I'd like to see something develop with it.
Well, I mean, it's just in order to develop the program, to give you an understanding, I mean, even now, even now with the pieces that you see in there related to roads, the piece that we don't see when we look at that is what the anticipated cost is to replace all of the roads at some point in the future. And granted, that figure's always changing, but how do you know whether, if you have five million dollars or ten million dollars, when do you, are you ever comfortable of, is that enough? Because you don't know it's enough until you see what it is compared to what the total cost is out there to replace it all.
What I think I hear you saying, which we, I don't believe we have, is we need a multiple-year capital plan. Our time horizon, at least the time I've been, the short time I've been on the council, our time horizon for capital improvements is maybe, maybe eighteen months. And what we should really be striving for, coming up with a way to do it, is having a capital plan, for, a plan for capital improvement, be it roads, be it infrastructure within the office, you mentioned, IT equipment, other kinds of, of things that are, are considered. You mentioned IT equipment, other kinds of things that are considered to be fixed assets. We should have a schedule, maybe going out three, four years of what we plan to do. Then when we come to, we come to that point, we're not just sitting around in the budget year and saying, oh, we gotta do this, we gotta do that. We go to the plan and we say, this is what we said we're gonna do, this is how much we can do. Or we can't do this, we have to adjust it in a certain way. We, if I'm not mistaken, that's what, we don't have that. Until we get something like that, we're just gonna be flittering around from year to year.
Well, we have started, you should have this document, yes.
All right.
We've had it, we've had it because we, we did, it's been, it goes out 20 years or 18 years. Because that's, the reason why we guessed that what the road cost was, is we just replaced all the roads, it was 15 million dollars. So our logic was, they're gonna last 15 years. If we set aside a million a year, that's a pretty good mile post going forward. Saying, here's how much we have to have over a five-year period, 5 million dollars, then we do a project. So we haven't, we haven't been doing it correctly. This is not in the budget right now. We don't have replaced chairs. Chairs are gonna have to be replaced. We've been doing all the shiny things, the truck goes bad. The only department that really does that pretty consistently is the police department because they don't have a big need for capital turnover, you know, things that are turning over other than vehicles, which they've, we've finally gotten into the groove of two a year because we know the mileage hits and that's what we have to do. So the only one that's kind of close to where it needs to be is the police department, you know. But we're not looking at building replacement. We're not looking at upgrading your security system that you have within the police department or things like that down the road. Those are the non-shiny things that aren't in our capital. But the big ticket items have been in the capital improvement program. We just don't have a way to fund it. And I, I don't know, I mean, are you gonna address that issue that we're, you know, we're only taking in 300,000 to that fund this year?
Well, let's, let's talk about some of the bright spots that you have that we really don't talk about. Is the fact of, yes, we have a big road program or we have many projects out there now. You do have an MFT fund that if you looked at the, what we're showing now, we're trying to move in the direction of that 400,000 dollars that's flowing into that MFT fund every year. We're going to designate as much as that as we can to help with the road program. We wanna take in the, the capital program. There are things in the capital program that may involve the water and sewer fund. Those items that will be funded by water and sewer may appear in the capital program, but we're gonna show you that they're gonna be funded from the water and sewer fund and not necessarily from the 5.8 million dollars that you necessarily moved there. My point is, there are other pieces or other things that we are trying to designate to be used for capital purposes going forward that in the past, I think we look to, to try and cover operating expenses with them. Still have to pay, oh, still have to pay the operating expenses. But we're trying to designate as many of them as we can going forward.
My only fear is that we're eliminating the pain of the budget time by even suggesting that we have a surplus or using that term when we have 300,000 dollars. If we're not saying that we need to stick that into the budget this year. That one of our budget items in our general fund is the funding of our capital program of a million dollars. Now we're 700 short, which puts us more in a defensive mode of how to come up with 700. Right now, we look at this and, you know, we're fine because we're 300 to the good. It takes away that scrutiny of the current plan, your current budget, because we are to the good. And that, that number, like you have said, is gonna go down. If we're raising, if our costs are going up 3% a year, we're not seeing 3% increases in our overall revenue. Revenue's going down over the past four years.
Pat, one of the, one of the things that I'll say to that is, we can look at things in a good light or we can look at things in a bad light. I could have handed you this sheet of paper that said that, Pat, we have a surplus of 300,000 dollars and you could have thrown it back at me and said, but I expected 900,000. My point is, the numbers that we're showing you are real. I understand, and I would never necessarily call it a surplus. I'm showing you revenues over expenses. But that amount that we're over may not be as high as you wanna see. And now we have to figure out, if we need more money, what is it going to take us to get to that level to allow us to continue to put into the capital fund the amount you thought you were going to put there?
But 1.7 million dollars is not unrealistic in capital improvements for a town of our size every year, year in and year out. And, I mean, our roads alone are a million dollars, at least a million. I mean, we're going forward with an old number, but if we go forward, it's a million dollars a year, not counting inflation, costs increasing and whatnot. So 1.7 is not high, but we're only, I guess I just remember the day when we had to decide if we were gonna eat our left arm or our right. And to have these kind of discussions right now are so, are so, so Blenko-like or Winnetka-like. That I'm not used to it. So I, we're talking that everything's okay, but I, I think there's a storm coming.
No, I, I, please, and please, I, I don't wanna call it a storm. But I will definitely tell you, there's a rude awakening coming.
Yeah, it, right, it's not just us, I think.
Oh.
You see those reports from the American Society Civil Engineers, like the degrading of the nation's infrastructure. It's interesting, we've had so much over maybe the last 10 years, and understandably, but there's, there's been a political focus on the pension liability. My own sense is that the infrastructure liabilities may be even worse.
I mean, please, they're both good causes. My point is, before you designate one or the other, you need to realize what the importance is of, or if you fund one thing, what the downside is if you can't fund the other thing. And figuring out for the dollars you do have available, which is going to provide you the most benefit.
And my point is, in order to be able to do that, we need some kind of a plan going forward. Rather than sitting around this table every 14 months and trying to figure out how we're gonna spend it, what we have to spend then. That's my point.
Okay. Well, Larry, just, just about the plan, I don't think 1.7 million. I think going forward, if we did a plan, 1.6, if we did this plan three years ago, as detailed as we should, I agree with you 100%. It wouldn't be 1.7 to spend this year, it'd be 2.2. Because there'd be other things that we'd say, we need to do this, we need to do that. And my point is, because we've stripped the service charges, because we've got the budget in a format that's correct so that we can see what operations cost and so we can see what capital is. And all the enterprise funds and everything runs on its own, we're only throwing off 300,000 dollars just doing the status quo because we're draining, not draining, I don't mean this in negative terms. It's just the best description I can say. Draining the capital program for this year's program because it's there. If we go forward two years, and let's say we're 700 to the good next year and 800 to the good after that, by that time that fourth year comes, there's not gonna be 6.2 million. We're gonna be saying, we can only do 500,000 because that's all that's left in the capital program. I don't think our problem is we don't know what our expenses are. I think our problems are, we have to, our revenue side is what it is. There is no changing that needle by much. Sure, we got gaming, sure, we got OTC, off-track betting. And those things, what they do, they replace some that fell off. Now we had the airport fall off, now we had something else fall off. That always seems to happen, that's, we always seem to pick something up when something else falls off. You know, the Volcker grants fell off, but now we got revenues up because of the gaming, because off-track betting, because permits and fees and whatnot. But we are on the high tide side of this revenue in the economy right now. And we have to be acting like going forward, it's not gonna get better revenue-wise. It's either gonna get worse or it's plateaued. I mean, that's our biggest concern with the budget. As far as your guys' internal budgets, I'm fine with them, I'd rather there's no surprises there. So I won't spend much time talking about your stuff at all, zero time. But this is what I think is what we need to talk about. This is the important thing going forward.
My, my point to you is, or I tried to make the point at an earlier council meeting. I realize pensions are important, I totally do. Bottom line to you, I will tell you though, that we are required to fund at a level that an actuary determines for us or to fund based on a Department of Insurance report. My point to you is, if we meet what the actuary says, which means that we are on the path to fund those pensions to at least a 90% level by 2040, if we meet the actuary's demand, we have done everything that is required to us.
I agree, yeah.
My point to you is, I could throw a half a million dollars additional into the pension fund, but every half a million dollars that I toss into those pension funds is half a million dollars less that you may need for road X, row Y, truck A123. And so you need to make the determination, what's more important? To fund more than what I am required to fund or continue to make the repairs that I need to make? Because easily, I could tell you, I don't mean this in a bad way, I could throw a million dollars to that pension fund. And two months from now, that stock market could tank on us. And that million dollars that they may now lose in that stock market, I still have to fund that come 2040.
But we're only funding to the actuary level in this.
No, last year you funded.
But I mean, this current year, to get to the 300, we're only funding to the actuary requirement.
My point is, and that was another one of our talking points, and then we'll move on to the next page and cruise through here, is the talking point, the strategic point about the pension fund is, I have revenues over expenses of 100,000 dollars. If you told me you wanted more money thrown to the pension fund, something's gonna have to be cut out of the budget because I'd only have 100,000 dollars that I could throw at it. And I'm only raising that, I'm not saying you can't throw more money at it. I'm just saying if you do, other things are gonna have to come out of our budget as it exists today.
Or we have to find more revenue.
Or you have to find more revenue.
Or we have to decide, in the budget, what things we need to do and don't need to do.
Yes.
And there's a lot of, I mean, none of them are big-ticket items, but if you, there's a lot of little items.
Or we just need to do a better job of collecting what is sitting out there that I haven't collected out of that program. You know, that's nobody's fault, it's just a matter of, we need to do better. And the only way we do better is, we have to get quicker at it. Because it's taking us too much time to get after the people that owe us money. And the more time that gets wasted getting to them, the least, the less we're going to get. Because people move, then I have to trace them, or not me personally, but you get the point. Okay, next slide. This slide here is just a, gives you a snapshot of, based on various categories of revenue, how it's broken out. You'll look at me again with, and say, Mike, what's in local taxes? These categories that we have these graphs broken up to are the categories that appear in the revenue and expense reports that we're sending you on a monthly basis. So if you look at the section in that revenue and expense report that's labeled local taxes, you'll see all the local taxes that appear in that category. I didn't list them all, but, KP, you can move. Please stop me if you want. Revenue trends. This graph, all I'm trying to show you from this is, those arrows aren't necessarily pointing the way we want them to point. And those arrows are not going to change in the short term.
When you have that arrow for property tax pointing down, is that the top one?
It is only the change in the, probably the property tax levy amounts. It would include all the issues that are sitting out there.
Well, no, I guess the question is, is that relate to the LGDF?
No.
So is that declining property value?
That, that property tax that out there, coming out there would only be from a levying amount. The only levy that's sitting out there in the general fund is the property tax levy. So I'm sure it's a difference between, yeah.
I guess what I'm trying to figure out is what that is, because I don't know.
It's the bond payment tax?
It would be the debt service payments.
It would be, but it, I just don't know whether it's, or 3 million of.
Yeah, there's not 3 million dollars of, I think the line.
Unless that's all of it, I mean, that could be the water fund, every time it's got a bond out.
There's no property taxes out there other than the.
I'm colorblind, is that, yes, top one property tax?
Yes, it is. But there is no 3 million dollars of property taxes, I will check that.
Yeah, that looks like an error.
Yeah, because some skewed there. The other ones though, income tax, sales tax. I think maybe the sales tax number that's sitting there, that sales tax number that probably, that blip, if I had to guess, was probably from adding your grocery store at one point in time.
Mike, the chart for the property taxes was going up quite a bit in the prior year and then down. Is that because we overfunded the police pension last year? Doesn't have anything to do with it?
Nothing to do with that whatsoever.
It's just wrong, it's in the wrong.
Because it wasn't, yeah, it's in the wrong, there's something wrong with that line, yeah. There is something wrong with the line. The other reason that the other two are there, the places of eating tax and the video gaming tax. Video gaming tax is probably the one revenue source that is going up. It will, it will continue to go up. I mean, I guess what I would say is, we will continue to watch as we add video gaming places if everybody is, if that revenue source continues to increase. If we reach a point in time where we've added so many that we see it start to come down, we know we'd probably be at the saturation point of, there's only so many dollars that can be distributed within Prospect Heights. Clearly, that is not the case now. I am amazed at how that number goes up.
Actually, Joe and I were talking about this the other day, and it's really, you attribute that to Prospect and Arlington Heights having not yet done anything with it.
Oh, dear God.
Because that would certainly steal market charm.
Yeah, we're an island. Arlington, Northbrook, Glendale, there's a number of communities around us that do not have those.
Do you know, Lois puts her, Lois puts her. And then, then we've got, you know, LCs on the verge of opening, they're waiting for a couple of things, so there's a couple more.
Yeah, my guess is, once that happens and you do a chart showing each one, since they've started, I think you're gonna see it start to, because you have five places within a thousand feet of each other now.
It, it, it's amazing though, I can tell you in the other community where I work, the community next door didn't have it, they imposed it. I was just like, my typical black cloud scenario, oh, this is gonna come down. And they continued to go up even though the other community. So it's just a matter of waiting to see what the numbers prove to you. You know what I mean? Don't discount it just because you think it's gonna happen.
All right, Mike, can you send us a new?
Yes, I will, I will correct.
New illustration that has a correction.
We will have it corrected. Next slide, Pete. General fund expenditures. I think clearly, all, again, all I'm trying to show you is, over a period of last few years, the expense number is going up slightly this year. Nothing drastic. We know from going through there that we've plugged in everything that we need to plug into the formula.
And Mike, are these your adjusted numbers on both the revenue and expenses to your format? Removing general, removing service charges and?
All, everything that you're seeing for 2018, 2019 is without the service charges.
I mean, if I looked at the budget for 2015, 16, 8.1 was not the revenue because there was, I mean, there was not.
That includes service charges. It does.
This includes?
Yes, oh, yes, I haven't pulled them out. I haven't changed the actual revenue. I'm just telling you going forward, you're not seeing those service charges.
Because I mean, prior to this last year, we expensed capital improvement before 17. seventeen. So our budget would go, we'd show, we'd have ten billion in expenses, because we were expensing capital programs. The last year was the first year we kind of separated them out, segregated it. So before that-
I, I never understood that. I mean, I never understood it from the standpoint of how much those expenses could fluctuate from year to year, yet even though they were supposed to, that they didn't. So it was like, was it always anticipated that we budgeted to do something, knowing we're not gonna do it? Because that's what it appeared to be.
That's what it was. We'd always say, don't do it till the year end, till we know what things are like, before you go out and buy that piece of equipment, or get those two cars in your department.
I know how that works.
We, it was just a, it wasn't a policy, it was an unwritten policy of, don't write those POs until after we're done with our six-month review, and then our six-month budget amendment, then it was okay to do the big-ticket items.
And I would tell you, in most cases, those things that you budget for capital, those are the things you want done first in the course of the year. Because the last thing we want of is screwing up two fiscal years.
Right.
And the reason I say that is, if you don't spend the money one year, it's very easy for people to see, well, because I budgeted for it, that means the money was available to do it. Well, I've seen many cases where people get confused, because they have multiple years going, and they're budgeting to do more things than they have money available. So my point to you is, if it's important to you, if you feel it should be done, we should be doing those right at the start of the year, to ensure that they're completed. Okay? Another graph, just showing based on departments, where the bulk of the expenses are. Al, you got a mighty big section there.
Show me every other department, every other town is the same way.
Can we move finance into the blue section?
If only we had a fire.
You ripped the words right out of the head.
Fire can suck money faster than police.
I'm in, I'd be in fourth place then, that's awesome. I'm in third now.
Yeah. Next one. Again, we don't need to talk about it, but these are your existing debt schedules that are sitting out there. The second one on the first page, that shows that five hundred and twenty-four thousand, that was your last payment in the Palatine TIF, so, which was done this current year. So going forward, we should have that five hundred and twenty-four thousand available, to repay the interfund loan to the general fund, which would then provide you with even more money that, to be available for capital.
The only thing I'd ask, is when you do the final budget, I don't know what your final packet will look like, but I've always asked that we put these-
In there?
These in there, the salary schedule, the vehicle schedule, the equipment schedule, you know, showing, here's a list of all the vehicles we own, how old they are, they're odometers, you know, or what they were approximately at that time. So that we have, because to me, that's a historical document that I got, that's GBC bound, and I have it home for the past five years, and I can grab it and look, if I said, what did we spend on that last year for, or how many vehicles did we have?
Okay.
It's in one place when we do-
That salary schedule doesn't have employees' names on it, does it?
It did, yeah.
Well, that's not good, because that's foible. If somebody asks for it, we'd have to give it to them, and we really don't want to give them.
Well, we do it through the-
It didn't have names, it had-
Positions.
No, it had every officer's name in it.
See, it should- I don't think it should.
It was on there.
I don't think it should.
I don't care if it says position, that's fine too.
No, I'll be, please, if you want to see it, and you're not seeing it, we'll be more than happy to send it to you.
Well, you know, I'm not, maybe I'm talking about the one that we got before you put the bound one together, that I keep. It was probably just staple, and it had all that stuff to it.
We have to show one-
No, no, it was part of the bound one.
We have a conversation report.
Yeah.
That was this thing.
And we have equipment for insurance purposes.
Fine, okay. We'll have it. Next one.
Couldn't all those, couldn't all those names just be identified by position, number, batch number, whatever?
It would be that, it would be a capital-
We'll just follow up from what we've done.
Okay, next page, Pete. Oh, Prospect Heights Police Department.
Well, actually, actually, if you don't mind, if we can go, because this is kind of the underpinning of the budget.
I'm sorry, I-
If we could go through the issues, maybe start off, and Mike alluded to, recommended this year, is we do not do a supplemental pension payment, we just do what's, what's required by state law.
And that's pretty much what we've included in the budget.
Got a question though about the pension. I noticed that you recognize, I've never seen another pension board, one that's got, you know, a lot of, a lot of, the recognition of unrealized gain as a revenue. That was in this.
Well, that's only coming from the police pension accounts. We don't, we don't recognize that. The Lauderbach and Amon, who does the accounting for the pension fund, may include it on their report, and we carry it over. We have nothing to do with that. We're just taking their data. It is audited, but we, we are not compiling it. No.
Like, the investment income was recognized as a-
The next item, really? Go ahead, Joe.
Motor fuel taxes, we reported at a prior meeting, we're under review by the Illinois Department of Transportation for some of the previous submissions to agency for motor fuel tax fund. And because of that, we're being a bit conservative, Penny, I mean, we think we're gonna be able to come back with a response that they will find acceptable. But nevertheless, until that time, we're being a little bit conservative. But we do have a recommendation that nine hundred thousand dollars from MFT be transferred pending their approval, which I think we're sus-, we suspect maybe will be within the next six months, I would hope.
I would hope.
But anyway, that, when that is completed, our work with the, with the IDOT review, what we would recommend is that balances within MFT be transferred to capital projects and designated for upcoming street work.
Is that already designated for the sidewalk extension?
Not sidewalk extension, no, this, yeah, not MFT. We do have, I believe we have some money designated for safe routes to schools, which is that Schonbeck Road project, and I don't believe that's-
The completion of that section?
Yeah.
Because I thought we spent all that money.
No, we have, we didn't spend all, I don't think we've spent all of it.
No, I think you said it was a grant that's still out there, that if we submit the bills for it, we can get.
Right, right. And certainly a part of that is, there's the shared local cost.
We, we need to verify that that's out there.
Is that budgeted in the MFT fund currently? I don't believe so. Okay.
No, Stephanie always told us, sorry, the old finance director always told us that we could use the MFT money for-
I'm sure you could.
So Joe, your recommendation is to move that to the capital fund?
Right.
The MFT fund?
Right. Pending, and we'd report this, but, but we'd report this when it comes later. But at least for the sake of tonight's budget discussion, we've identified that there's nine hundred thousand dollars that we believe will, will be positive to the city, which then we could use for MFT transfer to Capital Project Streets.
As long as we follow MFT guidelines in doing the project.
Which we do by using-
Pending their approval.
Yes. Our engineers will be there.
No more surcharges against it?
Pardon?
No.
And I'll check on Schonbeck funny, I'll check with-
All right, it's fine, I just didn't analyze. Historically, she was taking money from the MFT to pay for that, or subsidize our costs.
Okay.
MFT is specifically designated for roads and pedestrian block near traffic and, traffic, right?
Traffic signals, street lights.
Anything where we-
Sidewalks. Sold. Next one, Joe.
Third item is the Palatine Milwaukee, Milwaukee TIF. That is going to be completed about May 2020. So we, we basically, we don't have a long period left, this, this, a little bit over two years, two years and a couple months. It recently started to generate a positive balance, but because of the obligation prior to the city, we're recommending that that rather than being held up in that account for distribution at the end, that we pay ourselves back.
First thing we're gonna do is retire the interfund. Second thing we're gonna do is start bringing down that four point four million dollar transfer that came from the general fund. The only reason we're having this conversation here is today is so that somehow, somebody doesn't come up with another thing to expense out of that Palatine TIF, when we already, oh, need to pay back ourselves.
Here's a part two, just, if, if money is left in the fund balance of a TIF at the end, it's distributed to the taxing districts. Now, our, certainly Mike and my recommendation is that the city's already paid, paid the bulk of that. I mean, we, we basically loaned the, the TIF fund money, so that it, it seems reasonable to me that the first call for that money back is the city. And I think that also would be better, then sometimes at the end of a TIF, people will pave streets, even when they paved five or six years ago or such. I don't think that makes any sense either. But, well, basically, this is the opportunity to talk about these things, so we're recommending that the money that, from this year, and not too much longer, basically next year or the following year, the money that comes in, that we, we pay ourselves back, and just make that, that transfer almost automatically.
It will be.
Are you gonna require, somewhere along the line, action required to do this? Should we be making motions to do this now, or doing, or is that something?
We could just as easily tell you when we're doing it, so that you know it's happening, as long as you're agreeable to that.
Yeah.
It'll be in the budget, it's gonna show up that you're, that that's gonna be an expense to that fund.
Well, in this case, I guess what I'd say is, we, we would just reduce the interfund. I technically wouldn't have to do anything. I wouldn't have to budget for a transfer, because the interfund loaned is already established. All I'd have to do is move the money.
What is?
I should just tell you that we moved the money. That's-
What is that amount? That's the five ninety-four or whatever?
Well, this year was six seventy-nine, what the increment was. So if I got six seventy-nine, we'd just be moving six hundred and seventy-nine thousand from the Palatine TIF to the general fund.
This is a Nike action.
But it's-
It should be a Nike action. There's four of us sitting here.
I, it's just, they're gonna put a resolution in front of us, and we're gonna say to do it. I mean, that's, I think what he's saying is-
I don't even need a resolution.
They don't need direction to do it, they're gonna do it.
I can do it already.
But I think when it happens, there'll be some kind of memorandum.
We're just gonna let you know we did it. I don't need to tell you.
Okay.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure we're not, we're not missing something that we should be.
Essentially, we, we've operated in the red, we're paying ourselves back, or attempting to pay ourselves back.
If you guys don't need it, fine. But it's a Nike direction.
Okay.
Uh, next item, fourth, that Mike, that you've touched on this already, but this is the point of the elimination, ninety-five percent of the existing service charges in the proposed budget.
The only ones we have left are garbage, and we have tourism. I'm not necessarily sure why I even left the tourism, other than the fact of, I really can't allocate wages there. So anytime Mark and his people spend out there, I figure it's gonna be eaten up in the seventy thousand dollars. One discussion that'll come up, there is a fund balance in that tourism fund of three hundred thousand dollars, of which we'd like to designate it for road repairs within that tourism area. It does appear there's a step where we would have to get that somehow approved by the tourism board.
No, they make, I thought it was, they make recommendations.
Oh, okay, well, please, I'm, I'm not trying to make it harder than it is, but my point is, they do have to do something with it.
Yeah, there is, we checked that language.
Yes, in the ordinance. So my point is, there is three hundred thousand dollar fund balance, before some other project comes up to spend the money on, if we somehow designated it for road repairs in that area, I think it would be-
You would do that in this budget, because it would be a transfer from the budget of the revenue to the, to some other program, so.
I, I can't do it though, until it's approved, so.
And this, we do see Apple Drive coming up in the near future. Near future is within this capital budget, which is five years. Capital planning, that's nothing.
Is that part of the tourism district?
Yes.
Yes. What I would do is, a portion of, we would take it to the tourism board, and ask to use the three hundred thousand dollars for capital.
I don't know if I'd ask to, I don't know if I'd ask. I mean, we have our obligation, the forty-five or forty-some percent that we do. The other parts are, are, are not under their approval process. Only the allocation of the distribution of the forty-five percent of the revenue, I think it's forty-five percent.
I'm gonna-
Forty-two percent.
I'm gonna let you read that ordinance, because it seemed to be a little-
Well, there's only three items it pays for. I mean, it only pays for-
But you know the wording I'm referring to.
I do, I checked it too, I'll share it with you.
Because when we first started this, there was an excess balance based on the fund balance of the tourism board money that was there before. Maybe this is just left over because of a prod, something that wasn't done, that we were supposed to do.
It was money that wasn't spent by the tourism, not all the hotels take their money.
There is no split, there is no, all they get is, they get their grants.
Right, that's it.
There is no split, there is no, they don't have an account. Tourism board doesn't have an account.
No, I'm talking about the previous Convention Visitors Bureau.
No, no, we transferred all dollars out of there. Pat, I'll send you the language, because I checked it too, before we wrote this memo. I'll send it to you and give you a call tomorrow.
Because we've had this issue with Christmas lights, about authorization, I think we kind of have to get this-
Okay.
Biked down-
I'd love to.
As to what the two protocols, okay.
But I, well, Winkleman still needs to be done, Apple Drive needs to be done.
We only have a portion of those streets, the rest is-
Apple, I believe, is outside of the district.
No, it isn't.
Right next to the Comfort Suites or whatever.
District goes all the way down.
Excuse me, you have Lightham Plaza, just maybe at the intersection, I'd have to go to-
I'll check. You might be right there, but, but Winkleman, I mean, a good stretch of Winkleman is up to the force, but I guess my point is, it was never, it was never repaired or placed, so therefore, you know, have you been down there? I mean, it would need to be done in short order. So, to allocate that money, it could be spent pretty quickly, because three hundred and ninety whatever thousand dollars isn't gonna take you-
It isn't a lot, and we also think that everywhere Public Works did the repairs on the island, that might need a drainage improvement too, that's, so.
Plus, we need a bus stop.
Also, we're just, uh-
Couple of-
We're working, we're already working through that, that's gonna be taken care of.
Is it?
Couple new planners still, they're on their way.
Uh, next one, so the water rates.
On their way, the pension garbage can already been replaced.
Insurance company take care of it?
There wasn't one.
With it?
There wasn't one. This is a spot on topic.
That's this one.
Sorry, I don't know what we were talking about.
No.
That came out before, I didn't, I didn't copy this one. Here, you can look at, here, what, you can look at that. The next item that's on there is the water rate increase. We did calculate the water rate increase, and it worked out that it should be about three percent. The one thing that is a little disturbing to me related to the water fund is, if there are going to be expenses in the future, in the past, this, the two hundred thousand dollars that was being assessed to the water fund in the form of sewer charge, or service charges, wasn't built into the water rate, which means that none of the users of the water system were contributing- of the water system were contributing towards that two hundred thousand dollar expense for a service charge. Now, I'll be the first to tell you. If I tried to include two hundred thousand dollars of expenses into the water rate calculation, knowing that there are only a thousand water customers, that would go over not real well with all of the users of our system. So I have a feeling going forward that if there are significant capital expenses related to the water fund, that in the event they will need to get built into the water rate, water rates could go up substantially in the community here. I'm not saying they shouldn't. I just want people to be aware of it because in the past, people were holding expenses out of the water rate calculation, which all it was doing was draining the reserve balance that was sitting in the water fund. No one was ever making that sum of money up.
Is that loaned and paid off for close loan? Is it still a seven hundred thousand dollar loan or whatever against the water fund?
It's still being paid. I, I don't know.
Six hundred and twenty-five with interest, still. Twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-five is paid off. There's six twenty-five left.
That'll help.
Well, let me ask you this, the, that fund, is it, is it stable right now?
There is, just let's.
And increasing little by little because it was on its way to bankruptcy.
Well.
Just three, three, four years ago.
You have eight hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars of revenue and you have seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand of expenses. So there's positive revenues of eighty-two thousand?
Okay, but if we need to upgrade, um.
You don't get many upgrades for eighty-two thousand.
Right.
Okay? But there's only a thousand water customers, just so you know that, so.
Right, we already, like, did we recently upgrade the, uh,
Skater?
The Skater system?
Yeah, we did.
We did, okay. So that was a big chunk.
Mm-hmm. That was a huge chunk. Skaters not cheap.
I just wanted to make sure that that was done because we, that was a hurdle we had to jump over.
Wasn't new VFDs. It was just the system to monitor and control it. The hardware for it.
Okay.
But we still don't have VFDs in the big pumps.
You don't have them?
None of the big pumps.
How big are the pumps?
They're.
How many horse pumps?
I can't tell you how many without being wrong or something. They only, they're our, we call them our firefly pumps. They only run very minimally, but when they kick on, the VFD is, gives you a basically a speed control. Without it, well, but for what else? When they kick on, it's just you and me, sorry, sorry, blinders. Um, it kicks on, it could, it could blow pumps without it. But we haven't had a VFD on them for, yet. So it's on our wish list. It should be something that would be on the capital plan on the water side, but it's a large expense.
So that system works just on the pressure from Illinois American?
No, we have four pumps.
Okay.
We have a small, medium, and then we have two large fire pumps that don't have a VFD on them. Small ones do though. Yes.
Right, I, I was just curious if that was stable at this point or if it was on its way back to a negative amount.
We hope to keep it stable as long as there aren't huge capital expenditures added to it.
So you're, so you're proposing to increase it by three percent?
Yes, the water, the current water rate. It appears as you raise it every year.
Well, there was a point, I mean, Larry was heavily vested in this years ago. Was it U and B and a couple others that? And you remember when the, the fund was on its way to.
Yeah.
Being big.
See, not to delay this conversation, in my mind, the easiest way to do this is when you're developing your five-year capital program, in a year when it's developed, after it's been updated, you bring a consultant in on the water rate side to create a water rate schedule that'll fund your capital improvement schedule related to the water fund for the upcoming five-year period. You pass the five-year water rate increase, everyone then knows for the next five years what that rate's going to be. You only have to approve at one time and you're guaranteed that everything that's in the capital program has been funded because it's been built into the study. I tell you to pay a consultant to do it because then you don't have to fight with the public about who created it on the inside. If you have a consultant that does it, the cost to do it is probably eighteen to twenty thousand dollars, if that, if that. Sometimes they have it updated once you do it, the cost for the water rate study is seven to eight thousand dollars. My point is, if you do that, it makes a lot of pain go away and you accomplish funding the capital at the same time.
I think we did that when Andy was here.
I think you're exactly right. I was just thinking what I was saying.
Six years ago.
Mm-hmm. It makes sense.
But we didn't implement it like you had said.
Uh, next item, just go back to funding a capital improvement program. Uh, we've identified a, a few possible sources for, uh, contributions from, uh, as I mentioned, Apple Drive, we also mentioned Winkelman Drainage. Uh, I think it was three hundred thousand dollars from the tourism district to capital. Uh, other, other possible ones is the MFT money pending, uh, pending IDAT's review and approval. Uh, another item is, uh, there's, we have a, a charge from the, our SWANG, Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County. And so, certainly some of that, uh, pays for the transfer station and operations and our membership with SWANG. Uh, but it, we have had a higher funding level and there's about a, I think a six hundred fifty thousand dollar fund balance in there. Uh, we're recommending that that five hundred and fifty, or I think five hundred and thirty thousand dollars of that, um, be transferred to capital. And we're also recommending that we continue that level of funding and the reason being is there's probably not a vehicle that, that does more damage to our residential streets than, uh, a garbage truck. So I, I think there's some element of, uh, of, of paying for, uh, paying for street rehabilitation.
So you put something together, I saw a, a number of trips and it, it clicked with me that they go down twice each street.
Yeah.
And then there's twice because it's recycling garbage.
Yes.
Fifty-two weeks a year.
Not to mention the grass too.
It's a lot of.
Yeah, I, I got something from, I, see if I can find it here, I think from the, uh, like, like, uh, an engineering, uh, uh, study of that. And the damage is just, just terrible.
It was a, it was a car equivalent, I think.
Yeah.
It was like a big number, like eighteen hundred, two thousand car equivalent every time, every month or something like that, it was a big number.
You, you're, uh, a, a triple axel garbage truck is equivalent to fourteen hundred car trips.
There we go, justification right there.
Uh, and then other items within the capital fund, uh, we, you know, we pursue every grant that we can, whether it's sidewalks or, we, we've identified, this past six months or so, we've identified a couple of streets that would be eligible for, uh, for a service transportation program funding. At least in the local council, there's a moratorium on that, but I think in the long term, um, you know, that you get an eighty-twenty share of that versus the city paying full freight. So we're, we're trying to do everything we can to, to, uh, uh, look at the corners of our capital improvement fund for, for additional supplemental, uh, funding. Uh, let's see, other items we, oh, uh, Mike, we've also identified kind of discussion about, uh, I'm sorry, did anybody have any questions about the solid waste transfer or something other thing?
How much a year did you say that would be, every year?
Uh.
Well, the balance that's in there is six hundred thousand and he's recommending five hundred.
And how long would that typically?
I, I think every year it's about sixty thousand.
Plus a hundred?
Well, the hundred comes out and then there's still sixty.
So about a hundred and fifty a year.
Let's just say, round numbers.
The other item that just, it, it's tangentially related to this, but, um, this, this is the year or coming up at the end of our, our contract. And we'll talk about this in another session, but certainly it's the staff recommendation that we go out for a competitive bid. Uh, the, the market has been very favorable to municipalities. We, I think we could probably get five or six very good firms, uh, in a, uh.
To bid.
To, to bid. I, I'd also asked that we, we, to get our best pricing, that we be a little bit flexible as far as, uh, issues of whether the containers have a logo or not and also, uh, uh, the, the day of the week and so forth. But I think if, if we can find the right combination between a wa, a solid waste collector and our service demands, I think we could realize savings. And it mightn't be the incumbent, but I, but the only way we know is if we go out with a competitive process.
I just asked you, well, we'll go over that when you do, but I'm just asking, are those changes being done as alternates to their bid?
Yes.
So we're weighing, we're not just saying eliminate this or change the state, we're seeing what's actually working.
I think one of the hugest perks of this city is the garbage and I hate to change it, so. And not change the company.
Sacred cows.
Yeah, not, I, I'm not opposed to changing companies, but you know, you had mentioned logos on the garbage cans, I don't think we have those now. Um, but as long as they're coming and they're picking up my garbage each day, I don't care if it's Friday, Monday, Thursday, whatever, as long as they're picking it up.
Scott, their, uh, their service is seamless, right? We rarely have complaints about we pump it. They do a very good job.
Groot did us before.
Yeah.
Arc slash Republic, they did a great job. Arc slash Republic has done a great job. I think you're gonna have a hard time finding something that's bad.
Yeah, there might be some bumps in the transition, the first two or three months.
But the, the positive is I never had to put a sticker on a lawn bag, never had to, you know, pay extra to throw something out and I think that's the sacred cow you're talking about.
Well, we'll have more information for a second.
Okay.
Uh, see, bring us through a discussion about the general fund, existing fund balance.
We've already had that discussion a little bit too, Joe.
Okay. Uh, any, any questions? This is very helpful. I think we've got some sense of, uh, the, the council's sentiment direction, some of these larger strategic issues. And at that, we can, uh, we can dive into the operating.
Alex, all yours, buddy.
Thank you, sir.
Before, before you do that, I'd like to applaud you for your commitment to the capital program. We thank you both.
Thank you.
Hey. That was Joe's, that was Joe's focus from the beginning, so he's the one you need to take to.
Team effort and a lot of people contributed in identifying this.
Uh, the budget before you is basically flat, uh, except for a few, few areas, which most of you, I previously discussed this or I discussed it at the council level about areas of concern that I've had. But I'll go over it again here shortly. Um, the first slide, basically staffing, just to show you that, uh, we are fully staffed right now. Uh, the only changes that are gonna be occurring are, uh, there's three, uh, three officers that are acting as officers in charge right now that I'll be appointing to become full-time corporals, uh, with the retirements of several corporals, uh, so there would be some movement there. And, um, right now, potentially I have one sergeant, actually, one sergeant did tell me he's retiring this year, so there will be a, an additional promotion as sergeant and therefore there will be a ripple effect all the way down. I'll be coming back to the council to ask for, uh, uh, approval to hire an officer if that does happen. Um, but just basically to show you that we're at full staff. Our goals basically is to maintain the same quality, uh, current level of service that, uh, everybody experiences, um, to keep our young folks, uh, our new officers interested and keep them retained, uh, and give them the tools they need to do their, the tools that they need to do their job. The challenges that I'm dealing with right now, um, the Northwest Central Dispatch, uh, computer-aided dispatch, uh, records management sys, system. Uh, this is the third time that we've been through this, uh, project in my time during prosopites. So this is like the third different CAD RMS event. Hopefully they get it right this time. And, uh, you know, we'll, we'll be with it for a long time. Um, everything that's being presented to me right now is that, uh, they are gonna pay for most of it out of their own capital reserve budget and what they're expecting to get in nine-one-one search charges. Now, there's gonna be additional, like, add-on, um, entree items that, that if we want them, then we'll probably have to pay a little bit extra for ourselves, but I haven't been presented with a list, but they're looking to go operational on this sometime in early two thousand nineteen. Uh, the Volca grant elimination, um, for over twenty-some years, we, we've partnered, um, with Omni to provide, to basically, it was a position for one social worker, but they've split the time between two. So essentially, we have two victim advocates, social workers that, that work with us, that come from Omni, that pay for all their, their, most of their fringe benefits and, uh, we only had to pick up half the tab. And, uh, I'm still working on trying to renew that grant and trying to get it again, but right now, moving forward, I'm gonna just have to say I'm working under the assumption that we're not gonna get it. Uh, but they provide, uh, an integral service to the department and if I didn't have them, then I'd be probably looking for more staffing and investigations to, uh, to help out because there's a lot of mandates that we have in regards to domestic violence that we have to provide services for that, uh, if I had to shift that out to, there, there's a lot of reasons why you don't want to have a patrol officer or detective doing it. Other training mandates, uh, over the course of the last eighteen months, two years, obviously, uh, law enforcement has been affected by a lot of things outside of what I have a grip on. And because of that, we're being mandated by the state that we have to have X amount hours of instruction every year in, uh, certain core, um, areas. And, um, actually, I'll tell you, uh, moving forward that civil rights, constitutional law, cultural competency, uh, human rights and law updates, procedural justice and use of force, I have to provide training for that every year, which we have in the past, but not as much as what they've wanted. And we've been pretty fortunate to, to, uh, find some, instead of hiring like a special instructor or partnering with another department to pay for somebody to come out and do this, we've actually, uh, phoned some folks that provide online training and I've built that to our budget and, um, and we're not gonna have to pay out as much as what like some of these other departments are because it seems to be suiting our purposes fairly well so far. The other challenge, a lot of, in order to keep our officers with the quality of equipment and the quality of tools that they're used to having, uh, obviously that, uh, we rely on alternative funding sources. And the biggest one, biggest alternative funding source we have is DEA. And what I'm looking to do right now and is I built into the budget is basically paying for, uh, our, uh, software upgrades that we're gonna need to be able to run the new RMS CAD system. I'm asking, I'm, I'm basically paying for it out of our DEA budget. I think we're sitting with about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the bank right now. There is money in the pipeline coming in, even though I can't put it down as an expected revenue, but there's money coming in and, uh, I should be able to, to fund most of that. Matter of fact, I think I should be able to fund all of it through the DEA fund. And also I have a DUI expense account that we get a little bit of money back from the county and I've been letting that build up for a while and we can use that for upgrades like squad cars and, uh, additional, uh, computer needs. Trying to keep what we have going, uh, it's a full-time job. I mean, we have, we're doing the social media, we're doing the branding, uh, we wanna keep our reputation out there. Again, that's all part of trying to keep my staff happy. I mean, if, if they believe in the mission and they're out there preaching the gospel and it's being recognized, um, you're gonna wanna stick around. Next slide, Northwest Central Dispatch. Again, this kinda breaks down what, uh, our budget is from Northwest Central. They changed the formula a little bit. Right now, it's two. They changed the formula a little bit, right now, it's 260,000 thereabouts a year for our basic package from Northwest Central, and it's based upon number of calls for service, a number of telephone calls that they receive, because they can't break up like all the 911 calls coming in, so what they do is they break into percentage, and even though probably not that many come from prospectites, as would Arlington Heights, but they kind of break that up. They spread it out over all the member agencies in Northwest Central. The other thing that we get hit for with Northwest Central is that because we don't have a fire department, most fire departments have their alarm systems at Northwest Central, and they get paid, Northwest Central gets paid a fee, and what they do is they rebate the communities, if you remember up there, since the fire district is a member of Red Center, none of our alarms go into Northwest Central, so we have to pay the full head.
Who does prospectites use?
Red Center.
Oh, I'm sorry. Where is that at?
Where is it, Joe?
It's North Side.
Does it prove them can switch? Maybe they.
You know, it could, my own experience, the fire departments within the regional emergency dispatch center are very, very enamored with red services, they've gone through this with previous departments, they do not like to move from red.
The reason I ask is, obviously, they're filling their own budget pings right now, and if it would benefit them to switch and us to switch, you know.
Scott, I've brought this up with them before, and they seem to be very invested in Red Center, and not interested in moving it this time.
I think a big part, I've noticed, fire departments within a dispatch centers whose sole purpose is fire, they're 100% of the calls, they're 100% of the vote, they're 100% of the management, when they come into a red and blue center, they're probably less than 25%, so it's almost like you're losing all of your authority, so, my sense.
Thank you. The new CAD RMS system through Northwest Central is going to require me to get sixteen new squad laptops, twenty-two workstations, and again, I plan on paying for that out of the DEA fund. Boca, we already covered. Budget challenges when it comes to personnel, obviously, the patrolman's contract has been settled, the sergeant's negotiations are still in progress, but I anticipate that we should be coming to an agreement on that fairly certain. I have five officers nearing their 28th year this year.
That's a lot.
And I know one of them is going to retire, I haven't had a word from anybody else to reveal, seems to be satisfied right now, but I'm planning on almost none of them being here after thirty, though. We've just set the police officer eligibility list for, let's get to the next two years, we've just established a sergeant's eligibility list for three years, for all the new officers, we have a five-year training plan to get them up to speed, to get them prepared to fill some of these roles that are going to be opening up here in the near future. I also provided you with a graph of our revenues, the big one is, Alderman Lovett has stated earlier, it seems like as soon as you get something, you lose something somewhere else. I don't know how long we'll have red speed for, but it's been consistently been a revenue generator at about anywhere between 25 to 30,000 dollars a month. This year, we took a little hit because of the construction that was going on, it had to do with the Levy 37 project finishing, and when there's construction going on at a red speed intersection, it could shut down for the entire month, actually, it was a couple of months.
Three months.
So, we, our revenues were down there, our fines, our administrative toes, our, all the P tickets that are being written, were about the same as we've been the last couple of years, so I anticipate that we'll continue to bring in that level of funding or revenue. DUIs, I added that in there, we bring in about $8,000, that goes to this expense account that I referred to earlier, we're probably close to 30,000 dollars in it, and again, I plan on using a lot of that to offset some of the cost of upgrading the squads.
Yeah, can I ask you about the red speed? What is jeopardizing the red speed?
If you read like the Chicago Tribune, and what Chicago has done, and what other municipalities, you have some, depending on who's your point you're looking at, some folks believe that they're district revenue generators for certain municipalities, this particular intersection, it's the only one we have in town, it's necessary. We continue to meet all the state mandates, when we post our accident results, right within the guidelines, so we're doing it right, and, but because other places might not be doing it as well as we are, it's kind of bringing down the whole system, so what happens is it comes up in committee at the state level, time and time again, that they want to kill the red speed program, and then I have to work with the, our legislators to try to educate them and say, hey, you know, this is necessary, and this is why we need it.
Although, every year, there's legislation that's, will we grow the town's authority, and the Northwest Municipal Conference fights those vigorously to the elements of the city.
And it's not just to point out the whole home rule thing, sometimes it's not just to kill the whole thing, sometimes it's to remove the home rule preemption, is that what we call it?
There's been a number of different.
If you're not home rule, you couldn't do it. So, that's one of those home rule talking points.
What I try to do is when I see this, I immediately go to our state representatives right away, and I'm talking to them, and I'm like laying out the case, why we should keep it, and so far, they've been willing to work with me, so.
I hate it myself, but I do know where it's at, and I know that there's a lot of foot traffic across there, and a lot of people who make left or right turns when they shouldn't.
Exactly.
High speed there.
Oh, it's just, you're in a hurry, here we go.
And just to talk about revenues, I was always brought up that the police department's not there to, you know, you don't balance the budget on the backs of the police officers, but at the same time, you know, we are bringing in something, and I just want to kind of put it out there to show, you know, what we're bringing in every year. Again, budget challenge, we have the biggest alternative funding source that we have is our DEA officer, and over the years, it's been millions of the dollars for the good. We had a little bit of a gap this year when Joe Fertone retired, and it took us a while to get Mio German up to speed, so we weren't getting revenues during that period of time, but he's on a pretty good.
It's quick and now.
Right, yeah, there's a lot in the pipeline right now, and so, it's looking pretty good for us now, there's some challenges with that, because fundamentally, there are certain people, elected officials, that don't feel that this is a proper use, and again, just like with the red light cameras, it's more of something that I tried to address with their elected representatives, for example, for a period under the last president, it was suspended, so what happened was that the task force then shifted everything over to the state court, and, but it wasn't quite as well-oiled as the federal DOJ program is, so I started getting checks from like DuPage County, because that's where they had to file their seizure at, and they had, you know, from all over the place, because these were these task forces were working at the time, and then it was difficult for me to, I'd have to go back and reconcile it, you know, okay, which seizure was it, and so on and so forth, and share that information with finance, but everything's back to status quo, and, but I just wanted to address that. Any questions for me about anything that I've submitted?
What's the rotation schedule on your IT equipment?
It used to me, I don't, I wanted to create a schedule, but I would go to the, to our previous finance people, and they'd say, well, you get one this year, two this year. And really, the issue that I have is that we do need to make that part of an active plan moving forward, because I don't think, as a city, that at PD, we should have all the systems that are operating on Windows 10, and then I can't talk back to anybody on the other side, so.
It's sometimes.
Yeah, across the street. So, these are discussions that we're having with our IT people right now, and I've been talking to Joe about putting a plan together, and I think that we're looking at something more comprehensive next year, at this point.
We've actually identified some needs in the capital budget.
What's the average age of the equipment you got?
2012 was probably our last major upgrade, we have, we have two servers that we've upgraded over the course of the last four years, but most of our workstations and our squad car laptops, they are at the end of their life, cycling.
Well, last year, we did the server, and we said we would do the remaining councils this year, right? CPUs.
Right.
Is that in your budget?
It is.
Remember, we did their server last year, didn't we do all the terminals here?
You'll find out that we asked them to do that.
No, no, there was one, because one crashed.
It's better replaced as they, as they're needed type of situation.
I'll wait to get to you when I need to.
Alan, are there any upgrades that you're going to be doing, where, I know there's a lot of people, I use a driver's license, it's now the barcode on the back to pull up, even when you go to vote now, they ask you, they ask you for your driver's license, which at first was like, is this like a bad TV or something like, because you always heard about, oh, you don't have to show proof, although I think you should personally, I don't think there's anything wrong with it, but they take that when you go to vote, and they, they put it in this machine that reads it and pulls your name off.
We're looking at, as part of this new CAD RMS system, building that, that'd be one of the entree items that we could possibly, you know, sign on for, and so I've just been waiting to see, you know, what they come back with.
I watch way too much TV, especially like, live TV is my favorite show, but they, there are some.
Are you kidding?
It's my favorite show, I just, I can't stop. We could generate some money if we were to go like Lake County does.
How about a good Fight Jet Show?
They, they, some of the drivers in action will scan the license, and they generate a ticket, whatever ticket they're doing, right out of their car, prints it out.
There's a cost that goes along with that, and both the upfront cost and the maintenance cost has been pretty prohibitive for us, I mean, it just didn't justify us doing it, but if I can build this in with the next system, and we upgrade all at once, it might bring that price down, and plus, why would I want to go and install that right now when I know that there's something coming down the road?
Right. Remember last year, we got Mavis Beacon, taught everybody how to type faster?
But overall, everything is pretty much flat, I mean, there's a couple of small bumps as far as like subscription fees that have been raised and whatnot, but I'm not asking other than to address the situation with Boca, and to bring you folks up to speed, and what's going on with Northwest Central, everything else is pretty much status quo. Thank you.
That brings us to building and development. There's a reason why we have the Thorntons on the front, got some good news, they executed their lease hold with the owners, and they're targeting breaking ground just after the first of the fiscal year.
Right.
So this will be coming forward, it's not shown in, the permits for this project are shown in this, in this year's fiscal year revenue from my department, however, what's not shown is the potential of what the sales tax will do at the end of the year, so there could potentially be five, five months' worth of sales tax that's not accounted for in this budget, just because we didn't know when they were going to start or what their plans were, so that's a little good news.
You just have to make sure that the Illinois Department of Revenue.
That's a good number, though.
Yeah, so again, like the police department, we're running a flat budget, you know, there's, actually, we're looking at a little bit of a decrease, about $10,000 over last year, just because of, the Bridge Church was a big project for us this year, we don't have that level additionally, the trends are a lot of smaller projects, we still have good things, and right now, I'm projecting five new houses, and I just talked to another person today that's looking to build a sixth, you know, so with the Thorntons, with those new houses, our increase in miscellaneous permits, we should do good. When I did the projections on the revenues for the fiscal 19 year, it did not take into account the fee increases that were being proposed, just because of the timing, I wasn't going to bank on anything that hadn't been approved, so there may be a few, a little bit of additional revenue in what's coming forward for this fiscal year. The big expenditure reduction this year was moving $95,000 of engineering from the building and zoning department, development department, over to the administration, which was better suited to manage, those are things where larger projects, some of the highway department projects, some of the other engineering that were more administratively controlled than in the building department were there, we still retain a small engineering expenditure account and a billable, reimbursable on engineering for projects directly related to permits, such as when Gaywall has to do plan reviews for the Thorntons, or they have their own onsite inspectors there, so that we can pay them out of the proper account. For fiscal 19, we're projecting $431,000 in revenue, 186,850 from permits and inspections, a rental licensing and inspection program, this is the first year in looking back at it, that we hit 98% of our revenue collected and 98% inspections done in the year. And there's no, we cannot justify any additional increases, it just is not, you know, it is what it is, there's not room on that one, but what I am happy to say is, we've already started collecting a large share for next year, and we're on, we should be early part of the fiscal year, pretty much caught up on this. So, where I think some attention needs to be is in our business registration and inspection program, and I'll talk about that a little more in a minute, but I'm projecting a little over 8,000 in revenues, staying status quo in our ZBA hearings, and based on actions of the council and our recommendations, the vacant foreclosed property registration, about, based on 67 vacancies that we had on the books right now, should generate to us about 13,400. We've already received $1,500 on the program, that's come in unbudgeted for this year, because of the actions of Pro Champs giving the notices out at the beginning of the year, so we did project in about $2,000 worth of revenue coming in on that program that was not accounted for at the budget time. Let's see, one of the big things on the, why there's a large difference in the revenue between fiscal 18 and what I'm projecting fiscal 19, is a large, one-time capital project at Quincy Park, which I've kept the council apprised of. Roughly 530 of the 590 units have complied, got their permits. Roughly five hundred and thirty of the five hundred and ninety units have complied, got their permits and we're done with that. So it's not, it's gonna be a negligible number coming through in that. And then we hope to wrap that project up. And I do not foresee any large, uh, cap, those unexpected projects from any of our large complexes this year. Again, uh, we currently have seventeen hundred and sixty rental units, which are registered in the program. That fluctuates a little bit every year based on how many people go to rental, how many sell, how many have reoccupied units that they used to have. But, uh, our trends have been right about that ballpark looked at numbers. The good news is, is this last year, we, we got out early, got out consistently and we got payment, which would alludes to what Mike was saying is that we gotta stay on top of it early so that we don't have a problem at the end of the year chasing, which I'm happy to say that's where we're at.
Dan, do you mind if I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Uh, that building over on the east side there that is de-convert or converting from a condo to apartments?
Not, not accounted for because there's been no formal action taken. That has the potential of about, what was it, three hundred and some odd units? It could be substantial. Okay, it could be very substantial, um, in that, but that's not considered at all. And this, and that all depends on what happens with the sale. Correct, by any stretch, so therefore not considered here.
Dan, can I ask a question? If, if we were a home rule community, would that impact the fees that we would be able to charge for contractors and other types of inspections for that?
Not, not really. We, because building permits and inspections and life safety inspections at that level are highly regulated and authorized by the state now, we, we can charge for our services. We just have to manage so that we're not a profit center. You know, we've got to be able to look at our, our costs and now breakdown of what is the cost of providing the service and come in close and try and make back what we can. And my big analysis of this last year especially is that, you know, it's been almost fifteen years since the fees were adjusted on this. Okay, so that's gonna be a goal every two years, you know, get it out there, get it changed, let the people get used to it, do a good analysis and then come back with another recommendation based on what our costs are. But, uh, right now, Home Rule doesn't have, I'll say, in building permits and those inspections.
But, and as far as licensing, isn't there, I thought it was, there was a difference between us being able to register versus a license for a contractor?
Correct. Uh, being non-home rule, we cannot take a, a action to prohibit someone from making a livelihood. Where a home rule has the authority to establish a license and can withdraw a license. What we can do is monitor them, we can go after their bonds, we could make, do enforcement on it. But that guy can then, if he can get another bond, he can go back to work. We don't have the authority to tell him he can't work. That's the, that's the difference.
But the money's no different, it's just the authority?
Yeah, and right now we're at the, we're at about the top of the, what people are paying for contractor registration on an annual basis. One area I did recommend in the budget was electricians and mechanical contractors were only for twenty-five dollars a year and I'm making them equal to everybody else so that all the subs are at the same rate. So you don't have inequity between the various contractors. One of the big things that we started working on and what I've, uh, observed over the last three, almost three years now, is that our business inspection and business licensing programs here in Prospect Heights don't talk to each other. We have the right to do business inspections under a safety program under the building code, which generates about forty dollars a unit. It's a couple of different, there's twenty-five dollar a unit for certain types of multi-tenant buildings. But our business licenses were all over the board. And there was no way that the business license programs and the business inspection programs matched. Okay, so we spent a lot of time in redundancy. When we were going out and doing our safety inspections, we didn't know what licenses to be looking for when we were doing it to make sure that A, the businesses have the right licenses if they're required to have them. And B, are, are, are they meeting our expectations of acquiring licenses? So, um, the department, working with finance and the building department, we started out on an analysis of all the addresses that could potentially have businesses and could either be subject to business inspection and/or business licensing. And we came up with roughly three hundred and ten out there, of which only two hundred and six show up on either of the programs. So we've gone out to every site, double-checked addresses. Now we're compiling the data and we're gonna be going out and analyzing every single one to make sure that we have them on our systems first. Secondarily, we're gonna look at during the inspection cycle this year, are they properly licensed? And then we're gonna analyze, are the license fees correct? Because again, the majority of the fees are over ten years old, based on when they were adopted. And for example, our, um, health inspections for those places that need a health inspection, the current fees do not even cover the cost of doing the inspections. Okay, we, you know, like I explained before, we had a code deal that thirty-five dollars paid for five inspections. That's seven dollars an inspection. I can't even get them out for, you know, sixty dollars an hour. So that's, those are major revenue projects that I'll be looking at in information that A, we're not creating new ordinances, we're just trying to go back and recoup what we need to recoup. And when, and hopefully that will generate additional income from today forward. So that's a, a big initiative that we're working on in our department.
But these are not, these estimates are not included in your budget?
I, I have nowhere to start because I don't know what the data is. So.
Well, like building, I, I know I deal with this a lot for building licenses, I would, and, uh, or, uh, contractor licenses, I wish there was a unified. I know they tried working on that at one point, a unified license where you pay a thousand dollars and you're covered by every town. Every town collects it, but that's never gonna happen. Do, do we, I mean, obviously we're checking that people aren't saying, oh, I'm the GC, you know, I, they got a permit where they're putting an addition on it and all of a sudden here's the heating guy shows up and here's the electrical guy shows up and, you know, they're there for the inspection and, and he's supposedly signing off that he's the contractor for all that. I mean, the, and then like, like, uh, burglar alarms. I mean, obviously if they're coming in to hook up to the system, they have their alarm, you know, we're checking to make sure.
There's some things about the fire alarm side that's different in our state law that we, we can't touch them. But what we're making a point of doing is we'll go on inspections. You know, first of all, we don't issue a permit unless we have all the contractors on file. If a homeowner says that he's doing everything, we get out there and there's ABC Electrical, they're getting damned. They're being forced to come in, they're getting forced to pay. So that is something we're checking, but we still have to take the word of the person applying and then trust but verify. And that's how we're approaching it now. Let's see, um, again, the vacant foreclosed will be, is some new money. Um, there's a slide that talks about our expenditures. Basically, the building and development department is about ninety-six percent fixed cost. I don't have, you know, we don't buy things in the building department. We don't have some, what we do is we manage some, we manage third-party contracts and by operating office supplies and some little bit of training. And, um, that's pretty much it, about twenty thousand dollars a year in commodities for our department. There is, um, one, um, operational item that I put in here. Did not get put in because it is a fairly large expense. And I'm looking at a large format scanner, plotter, printer, because for two reasons. Number one, we can start scanning stuff, getting electronically filed and we can clean up the storage down here. But secondly, one of the board's council's goals was to have data electronically to eventually start adding as attachments to GIS as we start building that information system up so we have the records. In our current system and our structure, I don't have the tool to do it. Uh, right now, I've got costs running around seven grand for the purchase of, uh, we went to the Canon. And to your service package, I have talked to Deputy Chief Jones that said if they could use it, the fire district would be willing to do a little cost share on it. However, that's not incorporated into any of the purchase item expenditure at this time. Pretty much, um, that's it? Any questions?
Why didn't you incorporate it?
Uh, at this time, um, came in, this is more of a new goal, new piece of equipment, a wishlist item. And until I got direction from the council, that's an area we wanted to go. Knowing some of the other demands on the budget, that's why it was a wishlist and not an actual part of the expenditure budget.
Given what you've talked about in terms of increasing and on the revenue side, which is not built into the budget, do you have, uh, if all went, would go as planned, how much positive impact would that be to the budget?
I, I would, I would estimate just in the permit fees alone, about a twenty-five thousand dollar increase.
That would be perpetual.
That would be perpetual, yeah, yeah. And then as we do the business licenses, we do the other one. Even though the business license and that goes into the administrative lineup, it benefits the whole, the whole city. And the scanner, plotter would also benefit other departments on those electronic needs that they have, so.
Would it be appropriate to, or, I don't know if appropriate is the right word, would it be feasible to think about that in terms of those increased revenues that are not in the budget, at least for the first year? If they're going in to utilize those revenues to get, go for this item?
Sure you could. I mean, it's a pretty safe bet that of all the things that he's looking at, the cost of that plotter scanner would be more than covered.
Yeah, and it, it does have, to me, it has impact and implication. We're talking about GIS and all the rest of the stuff that, that goes with it. And if you can get the fire department to help a little bit, that's even better.
And they, he hasn't committed a, what, law?
No, I understand that. And you probably can't talk to him until you've got it. It doesn't exist for him until you've got it.
We'll charge him twelve.
So.
So that's something you should consider, or administration should consider. But it's up to you guys to decide. Anything that, pretty flat, straightforward? Well, that's all we have to present tonight. Is there any questions or items for discussion?
I would just like to comment, personal comment, this is much, much better. What I think the Strategic Directions Committee envisioned when we decided to go this way because we've got direct input from the departments now, we're talking about strategic issues, not going line item by line item and having some fog, a lot of fog in the discussion at that point, so.
Will any of these, will any of these items be backfilled with information from the council?
Well, we can, are there particular ones that you want? I've had in most cases for backfilling them. Being fairly new here myself, I was relying from recent history at what was making up those numbers. If something didn't change.
No, I just noticed that like some of the, and it's, you know, it's, it's, it's there to find.
On the expense side or the revenue side?
On the expense side, like, like, um, I'm used to seeing more of how like a department's total wages. And we see that through their presentations of how many people they have and whatnot. But usually more just, you could look at it and say, oh, they've got, you know.
Pat, we could, we have.
So it's with this instead of.
When it, when it comes to wages though, related to the wages and benefits, there are very detailed schedules that show all of the information that makes up all of those.
Well, I'll give you an example, like, um, like, um, Community Development Department. Just as per detailed analysis, I'm not wanting to see what each person makes, but it would not be nice to see that, you know, I gotta think, well, who's sitting in the office back there or who, who is part of it? Right, and, and what their, what their titles, you know, you've got one of these, one of these, one of these, and they're all full-time.
That number that's there is coming straight off a schedule that has all the detail in it.
Okay, so we have the schedule.
My point is, we could show you the schedule and it'd show you everything you wanted to know related to that line item. Because that's how we came up with that. Related to the insurance for every employee or every position, it shows the insurance that, package that they have, the cost that's being allocated to their.
What did we call that again? Cause we did that last year. The way, the, oh, the. We created that wage schedule. Personnel.
Oh, it's a salary order.
Salary.
We haven't, we haven't come in off of a wage and benefit schedule that we produced or we stole.
I, I agree as a, as members of the council, we need to know that information, assuming we wanna know it.
Yes.
But I think it cross, it gets, it doesn't cross the line. It gets close to the line of privacy and dissemination of, of private information. I, and I would think that we can work on a way where those of us who are interested in knowing those individual wage and benefit schedules, it could be made available and that create, it is a public document, which makes it, um, subpoenaable.
I mean, they're all public documents.
Right.
If somebody asked us, they don't know that they exist.
We're needing publishing.
Yeah.
We, and we, we carry it in the, uh, council of, by position, so we'll, we'll come up with something.
We'll put something.
Yeah, I think. It's a transparent process.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and for those who need to know that, particularly on the council, there should be a way.
Yes, it has to be posted online too.
It's not the, it's not the wage amount as much, it's just, the only historical document we really have, we care for year after year and look at an old one and try and compare it and doing all of the budgets. And when it says that it's some full-time equivalents here, like when, when Al said now he's fully staffed, what does that mean? Well, that means he's got three records clerks, he has two of these and four of those and six of those.
All, all of those schedules exist. You could see it for any year, there's a separate one for every year.
And, and you're saying those are online with individual names?
We have the publishing compensation report, um, for transparency purposes. That's online right now and we've done it every year, I bet you're.
With individual names?
No, it's not, it's just by position.
By position?
Yes, but it goes for everything as far as, um, sick, sick days, um, uh, insurance, all that. Total compensation. Cost.
Right, okay, but that's by, by position.
Yes.
Not by department per se.
Not by department or not by the identified individual?
Right.
That's where my, my question.
You do do an identified individual because you do have it in the, oh, no, you have it in the, uh, your, your end, um, treasure report, list of ranges, we set an issue with that a couple of years ago about that.
Somebody was in the wrong range?
Somebody didn't wanna be in any range, but, uh.
They didn't make a choice.
But, well, every year you publish, you know, here's the people that were zero to five thousand, five to ten, ten to forty, forty to eighty.
By name?
No, yeah, by name, by name.
Yes, by name.
You don't put their actual wage, but they're in categories of like increments of twenty thousand, ten thousand, so that's all.
I'm talking about very specific, actual data. That's where, that's where I think is we may get close to the line, but not crossing the line of privacy. And I'm certainly interested in transparency, but you don't wanna be.
Does that last you?
Yeah, it's in here. The honor is transparent, isn't we?
That's good, that's good, that's where we should be. That's exactly where we should be.
You make a better drawer than a window, right?
If I wasn't here sharing.
Well, I know, I think, I think the point I'm making is that the, to me, the budget is almost like a, uh, our, um, it's, it's a historical document. Yeah, so all that stuff exists. I'm not looking to see what each individual's making in that department. I'm just more concerned that we're showing how many people.
From year to year.
Five corporals, five sergeants, two runners. And then this year you have yourself, you have a guy, you have your code enforcement guy and the person at the front desk. And that's different than it was in two thousand eight when it was just two people. So there's some.
They were on parole.
Any other questions, Al? If that or next session is getting towards coming, March twelfth meeting?
We will cover Republic Works Finance Administration. And we're also looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, second. Thank you, we're done.